What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're going to be looking at three bet pots from the big blind. So this is sixty big blind pot or button raise and the big blind tree bets and the button calls. So if we see here, we have the old distribution for all the cards here. And if you just look at this little picture here, just forget that part for now. If you see here, like there's a lot of ace side boards where we check a lot. See here the checking range, like almost out of the ace side boards, we check a lot. And then if you look at the king eye boards, there's a big checking frequency when it comes like king nine four with a flush draw. Or like king nine six with a flush draw again. So there's a lot of texture where actually the tree, the big blind is going to tree bet and check a lot on the flop. So I wanted to look at big blind tree bet pots because yeah, this is a spot where I'm probably not playing optimally. Let's have a look. So yeah, a lot of checking even on queen eye boards and the pattern seems to be the same now. Think I understand it. When it's like one high card and then low, low and like low cards or like ace side with two low cards, like basically this portion of the graph is going to bet small a lot. So that's probably like locked up equity boards. Like ace side with nothing. And then as soon as it comes ace ten something. You see the checking range bam.
So. Button doesn't fold any Broadway combos even offsuit.
Yeah, exactly. I was thinking the same thing. It's all about Broadway.
As soon as Broadway comes in, yeah, so.
And what, what are we betting? Just pick one?
Yeah, it's checking or betting big. So. I think this is a very interesting spot to look at because.
I don't know if you can do, do it from that to the pick one that is a sixty six, fifty fifty. Take a look at what cards we're betting and what cards we're not betting.
Uh, we will have a look at a lot of textures. Don't worry.
Louis, before you move on, see that gap all the way to the right where there's a lot of betting? Like at the top of the graph?
This here?
No, the what next? Further to the, no, fur- no, further to the right. Looks like maybe ace ace or.
Yeah.
Is that, is that paired aces?
Yeah, paired aces, range bet. So paired aces plays a lot like ace low low.
Paired aces without a.
Broadway.
Broadway. Ace ace nine and lower is range betting.
Let's try to like write, write down a few textures. So like here, for example, so ace low low is small. Uh, if it comes ace ten X, see it's like that bigger check.
Yeah, I think you could easily just.
Eight eight.
They do. Ace is Broadway.
Eight, eight, ten X plus. Big or check?
Polarized, probably.
Maybe we could word it that way, right? Range bet? Range? And then polar.
So your first note, it says all range bet. That's a mistake, right?
That's ace.
No, it's ace low low.
Oh, they're Ls. Make them capital Ls. It'll be more clear.
It'll still say all.
Not what I meant. Yeah. I mean, he could have went like A L. Yeah. All right. Right. Almost to say all.
So got most of the ace side boards. Let's look at king eye board. I think it's going to be similar.
Yeah. But not as, not quite as often. There's still a tiny bit of checking.
So king. Range, but as soon as it's done here, it's now king nine. King nine plus. And you know, also queens.
I have a prediction about queens.
Yeah, queens is a bit more. So.
On king high board, the button will lack the ace king. That's the main advantage we have on the king high board. They're going to either jam the ace king off or three bet the ace king suit.
I don't know if that you could call that quite range.
Semi love. Call it semi range.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a good wording for it.
And then as soon as it comes queen nine plus.
Polar.
That, what we see here again, yeah.
Yeah.
Queen nine plus becomes polar. Okay. And then.
Hang on a second.
Jack and ten are polar, I think, just.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say Jack.
Very polar.
There are, it looks like there are some exceptions, but not enough to really make a heuristic about it.
So ten and nine are bold.
Now, ten and jack high.
And then as soon as it comes nine high. Nine high, we are, well, it's weird.
They're using more mergey bets nine high. It looks like you're middle, you're like a meddling bet. Fifty percent.
Eight high and lower, we range bet kind of big.
Yeah.
We bet a lot. We almost always bet fifty fifty. So. Eight and lower. It's like it's range fifty. Fifty small game. And then.
Was the ten and jack high boards or was it ten jack X boards that were polar? I didn't notice.
Uh, if you see here, every ten eye board to jack eye board is super polar. We mostly check.
Lo- Louis, just right to the tens, there's like a, a sp- or just to the left of the tens in the bottom bar. There's like a spike. Is that like nine nine boards?
Yeah.
It looks like ten high connected. Are big. It was like ten nine low, ten nine, ten nine, ten nine.
The ten nine and the jack ten boards. It's a three bad pot. It comes jack ten with a flush draw. You just stuff your ace king.
Yeah, but you just put in ten high and jack high and it's a, is that really heuristic or do they have to be connected?
Well, if you see here, do you see from the, this, just this portion here, okay, from the ten to the, the jack? It's not really, we can't say a change betting, right? It's checking most of the time. Doesn't really use a small size, but it's a bit of a thing, right? It's just a polar strategy.
Okay.
It's just not using the big size a lot. Polar, but not so big. There we go. But at the same time, very big.
Yeah, the connected ones are using a more polarized bet.
Well, the, the ones you're looking at.
Mergey.
The ones you were looking at right there are paired boards, ten eighty. Or, cause the boards below and above ten eighty are more polar.
It's like nine eight. Nine eight. Plus, well, there's just nine eight, we're polar. And then, yeah. So yeah, just a brief description of, try to put that thing here into words.
Yeah, that, that's good when you can do that because then you, you'll make, you'll make a few errors this way, but they'll never be huge.
Yeah, well, hold Justin notes as we go along.
All right. So let's put this here.
Louis, do you put the notes anywhere?
Uh, not really.
Oh, okay.
Usually when I take notes like this, I will post them in the YouTube link.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You gotta copy paste. You gotta steal him, copy paste him when he puts them up. We're not giving this work away to the people that don't contribute.
I can paste it in the chat too. Uh, okay. So practice. Okay. Got some spot. Classic. No, we're not that classic.
MTT.
MTT.
Is there a way I can lock myself into MTT probably, right?
Wow.
Well, yeah, one last thing before we start. Oh no, I messed it up. But we're going to see it from here. Oh.
MTT.
Eight sixty.
And confirm.
So. Big line strategy. This. And now. But also I want to see.
Focus on follow through. Oh. I like their little notes that pop up.
What?
I like their little notes that pop up when you switch screens. Sent you one the other day. I liked. Oh, what the hell was it?
We actually check over all thirty seven percent of the time. So. So three bet pot. Sixty button versus big blind. And the big blind checks. Thirty seven percent. Wow, I can bet you I'm not doing that. And he's mixing between small and big.
Well, I would call that small medium. I think half pot is medium.
I call it.
Yeah.
That's a mergey for me.
Yeah, that's a good word for it too.
So, all right. Keeping those in mind, let's try to.
You know who checks a lot LP in three bet pots?
Sundays, happy days.
Check too much, but at least not in this spot.
So. I would bet very often here. I don't see a reason to check. Now it's a jack eye board. What does it say about jack heart boards?
Without a spade.
We have some checks.
We're supposed to be polar here.
We have, we have a lot of checks.
I would say, I would say without a spade, I'm going to use a smaller, better check.
Action. Okay. It's not checking often. Let's see the range.
So it uses the half pot.
Stuffing twenty five percent of the time. That's check most of the time. Correct.
Wait, we have ace queen off.
So we bet aces, kings and queens and want to bet like blockers to these hands. That's pretty much what I see.
Yeah, but ace queen off is still checking more than betting.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta mix your frequencies with all your ace, queen, ace, king, queen, queens, the max, uh, to match your queens, kings and aces. You just gotta find some bets.
All right.
Look at all, all in twenty five percent on that last one.
Yeah, yeah. Whenever it's going to come like this, the way jack ten nine, if we add like ace queen offsuit here with just one spade, we just rip it. Sometimes. Do we bet here?
Without a spade, I'm going to say fifty percent again.
You want to check?
I think this board really hits him. So I think we're going to be really polar here. So I would check this.
So jack eye board, we need to be polar. There's no small bets here.
Yeah, but it's jack ten nine. Just, it's not just a jack high board. It's jack ten nine.
Or maybe without a spade, I'm going fifty percent with the spade. I'm going seventy five.
Okay, so fifty percent is pretty good. Half pot.
Or checking.
Blasted.
Uh, why do you think?
Block, we block the nuts. We don't have, we unblock spades and like, I just don't think we get, I just feel like we're supposed to spear when we're in blinds in these spots.
Okay, so we have one of our best end in the range. We didn't pick up equity and he called our bet. That means he has equity. Do we want to blow, if we bet the raise, what do we do?
Based on what I saw, how the small buy, if it plays anything like the small blind, I think we jam.
Okay, but what if you bet an e jams? Are you happy?
Well, I'm not going to have that because I'm jamming.
Hmm, going, I, I don't think it's big strategy. I would check and then see what he does. No, it's an all in. Why do you go all in?
Because we have the straight, the nut, we have the straight blocker. We unblock spade. Like if we had a spade here, it might not want to dunk. Maybe not. But this, we saw this in the small blind. If you have, you got two overs, a gutter, you, you three bet, you bet flop.
We're, we're open, we're open ended. We don't have a gutter.
Oh, we're even, that's even better.
We're open ended with two overs.
It's even better. Cutters are blasted too, I think.
Okay. So we jam with king, jack up there.
Yeah, king, jack makes sense.
Seems like we're mostly going all in here.
What if we have a spade? Do we, does that change our strategy at all? Cause I mean, I, I believe that if we have a spade, we might not jam.
Well, a spade in your hand, you're still jamming.
Still jamming?
Yeah.
Does it, does it have any checks with any of the combos besides spades?
Very small, but.
Check spades them all though.
Yeah. All right. So it's not really, it's not really heuristic to suit. Doesn't matter much.
Yeah. And you can see, it seems to really like the queens here in this spot.
So we rip, okay. Um.
I'd say fifty percent of check. We can check call. This is, you have to have some check, you have to have hands. I guess if we're checking a lot, we gotta have hands that can check call. This clearly can. This could even maybe check raise, but um, so I think it's going to bet half the time and check half the time.
But this, this board is lying around here. Jack seven something. So I think we're going to bet small.
This is the bot, this is like the bottom of our flush draws. Cause I don't think we have many weaker hands that we raise.
So we do play this one fifty fifty.
Let's see the, the flop strategy real quick. Um, flush. Fifty percent checks. Mixing small and big. Seems quite even.
If you have over cards to the jack, does it size up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we said it, over cards, yeah, sizing up with a spade, we don't need to size up. Uh. No, that's, that's clear. With a spade in your hand, you don't need to size up. You kind of do. Swear. The best ones don't, the, the bad ones do. Okay.
Well, ten has a, actually a straight redraw too, like king ten has straight redraws. Or king queen doesn't. King jacks a pair.
What do we do on this turn?
What do we do on the flop?
We went the, that's small.
It's check.
Want to check or?
I think we gotta bet. We can get high. We want to start pressuring like, uh, or just high cards.
We're going to have.
Yep. Sizing up, want to go in, I guess.
Well, I don't think fifty sizing up, but.
Well, it sets off a half pot jam.
Yeah, that is setting up stacks.
Uh.
I, I think we have, just keep going.
Yep.
Yeah. Definitely. King is pretty good.
Problem is he's not going to fold a jack now, but I don't think we get to decide that. I think we have to jam.
We have a pretty bad hand nine high.
Front door flush. Hold on, hold on. Do we keep bluffing front door flush?
Yeah.
The bricks.
Yeah, this is a bad one too. It's not like, like a queen eye flush draw here. It's like, uh, well, it's kind of middle of the deck, but it's okay for me.
I want to give up.
I want to go all in.
Yeah, this is, this is like our worst hand. We get there with.
Yeah, I knew, I knew. Pretty good for you Ken. You, you're, you're here on the river with like the worst end in your range. You're not in the middle of the decks, like the bottom end of the deck. This park is going to bluff.
I get it. I'm just sick that I set up such a, a gay, slow SPR that like, I don't think he folds a jack.
The problem is on your side Ken, they don't fold a seven. So it's different.
Also though, he has a lot of better flush draws still in his range. That we're getting to fold out.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. I mean, I get that we got a jam nine high there, but it just feels really bad.
We're just going with anything that made it here basically.
Yep. That's pretty cool.
Oh, so shocking. We lost.
What can I call that turn bet with king high eh?
Okay, so king low low. Range bet small.
Yeah, so twenty, twenty five percent.
Well.
There we go. And then what?
Check.
Check? Yeah. Do you double barrel if you have the nine of diamonds?
Nope.
We call?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
With the diamond, with the diamond, I would, I would start folding my diamonds. I'm going to call this one.
Easy. I would not fold a diamond here.
Nah.
The same value for me. Yeah.
In fact, some of the, there's a small sliver of raising with a diamond.
Yeah, there, there's a, you see here. It's not as good as without the diamond.
Well, spades, spades, spades and diamond has a sliver of raising.
Yeah, no, it prefers to have a diamond here. Cause we block more value.
Okay, I just looked at it like we blocking bluffs.
Well, if the flush completes on the river and we have the nine of diamond, we have, we're blocking value.
Well, yeah, that would be good. On this street, I feel like it's bad on the river. It would be good. I was wrong.
It's such a small bet and would still be second pair. Do we block, do we block that or?
We block, we block the nuts now because he's got a lot of the middleie cards. I mean, I would check.
But yeah, it's a four liner. How many, how many sevens does he have in his range?
I'm just going to check call half second pair to treat that, that SPR is one without full second pair. That's my guess. Just check and call. Oh, he beats us. Okay. Okay, ten eye boards. What does it say about ten eye?
Seventy five percent.
Kind of polar.
Polar.
This is a.
Seventy.
Why do you even go pot?
Yeah, seventy five percent.
Eleven or sixteen seem.
Well, I didn't see that one coming.
All in.
The.
Oh, it's like, yeah, ten nine, it's around here. Yeah, there's a, an all in or check. Check.
Oh, yeah.
This is where we are.
Jack ten and ten nine with a flush draw are both gonna.
I wouldn't, if I three bet here and I get this flop, I'm like happy days.
Yeah.
I was bluffing. Now I got value. So let's blast.
I can't see checking here.
But I would, I would never check it.
Oh.
When I treat that and I get this, I'm like, haha, let's, let's get to business.
All right, now we gotta put something in.
Uh, set up a jam with the size seventy sixteen thirty two.
Sixteen six.
Not bigger.
Pop. Need to go pop.
That leaves, yeah, but that leaves an awkward stack for the river.
Yeah. But we still, I love this play. Uh, cause very often people are going to call on turns and then brick on the river. So they can't call no more. So having a very big turn bet. It's very effective against.
Yeah, because they do have flush draws in their range. He folded an open ender.
Okay, king low low. Think we can bet small?
Fifty percent.
Want to size up with them though, right?
Mergey.
Yeah, merge.
Cause he's got the middle in the board. He's got middle board coverage with his suit and stuff too.
Good.
Okay, this changes nothing. We're going to barrel?
Hmm, hold on. I would be surprised if we check.
Well, why? We got value here. SPR is one. You don't check this. This is this.
I'm checking or going all in.
I like betting. I don't think all in is appropriate.
Seventy seven percent, it's eighty seven percent pot. I'm checking or going all in or the other.
You don't want to go out.
Nope.
Nah.
Maybe I make a mistake here. Maybe I go half too much. But I feel like whenever, like whenever I bet, I betting around goes past twenty three big blinds. And that one, one street, top pair, top kicker, if you look at database review, it's almost a never good. So it's like, ah. But twenty two for me is my.
Yeah, but we have an SPR less than one.
Okay, okay.
Maybe I'm old fashioned, but.
No, 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 I guess alright, you guys alright. It just does it. Good enough. But okay, fifty percent. Okay. Oh yeah, that's right. We're, okay. He calls every worse king. And if you think about it, he's calling with king seven, king nine, king ten. King five, does he call king five? Yeah, he's very heavy on things. So. King low low, we can range bets small.
This, I think I like checking with this particular hand.
Well, it's king low low.
I would bet.
Well, there, there is some checking on every board.
Yeah, yeah. This is a spot to check.
Yeah, it, it looks like this is the hand you really want to check.
Yeah, makes sense. Second pair. So now this turn comes, we're like, okay, okay. Oh, are we turning it? Ken?
No, I'm giving up.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm giving up.
Kind of a weird, it's kind of a weird bluff. It doesn't, it doesn't block Broadway. It unblocks spades. So those kind of point in different directions. Seven seems a little good to bluff, but there's a three bet pot to like.
Exactly.
If I had queen seven, jack seven somehow in my range, that.
He didn't raise us. The way this pot played, I would venture to say he's capped at a good king at best.
If I had nine, seven suited here, I think we do, we bet that. I would, I would bluff my nine, seven suited here, not my seven, six.
Well, he for sure has ace side spades in his range.
I, I don't think he has any kings in his range either because the turn went check, check. If he had a good king, I think he would have followed through on the turn after we checked. Not a hundred percent, but a lot of his kings.
How good was the check on the turn? Okay, was it very good? So I think we give up. This. The way we usually bluff the river is when we turn equity. And all of the bluffs that pass the turn filter are usually going on the river. And all of the bluff that don't pass the turn filter are. And all of the bluff that don't pass the turn filter are not going, but I, I think it's a check.
Open up the range, I wanna see if, I think we had nine-seven in range, I'm just curious if that bluffs.
I don't think any sevens are gonna bluff, like, he just has a lot of aces still here.
So big blind river range, is that what you wanna see?
Yeah, nine-seven suited hand. Clubs. Nine-six, is that? That's not a pair though, right?
No.
Nine-seven is a pair, so it is turning the nine-seven into a bluff, some.
Well, it's black betting. These are like, turn goes check, check, so it's black betting.
If it's betting small, it's.
Cause it's black, it's sort of somewhat quasi has a straight blocker, the nine. That's why I thought of it. Just the dark end of the straight, but it does have a blocker effect. Where the seven-six doesn't, it's just like, doesn't block anything, it's just a really marginal hand.
Yeah, I think, with the way it went, I think we still have a touch of showdown. So I think it's really checker that's small.
We could block that, these type events, at the end of the day, we could. Okay, it's continuing. Jack nine, so it's a jack nine board, so it's probably around here. So.
Check this one, I think.
We should go polar. We wanna go polar with over cards, right?
Be nice, this is pretty good.
This is a pretty nice, I mean, laugh, it's very reasonable to bluff with.
Yeah.
You guys wanna bet here?
I prefer, I prefer being a queen ten of hearts, but.
I think this is gonna mix pretty hard, so I don't.
Uh, are we happy?
Probably gotta stuff it.
Would you rather bet like king, queen of hearts here or ten-eight?
Yeah, the, the hearts are gonna try and wanna realize equity, they're not gonna wanna bet here, I don't think.
I don't know why, but my little finger is a check.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm definitely need to improve that.
Yeah, we wanna have some hands that can check call in our range for sure, so this is a good one. This might check raise. Small bet, I, I, I don't hate a check raise, honestly.
Check raising in a three-bet pot like this, what if you break turn?
I mean, queen eight, queen eight would probably be, I mean, another card would probably be better, but this is, yeah, this is gonna be hard to approve.
It's a small bet, we can call, we have the equity to just call too.
I guess we call. Cause this type of texture, I think if we check it up on Jack-iron ten-eye board like this, it's because it smashes his range. So.
Yeah.
If it smashes his range, we don't.
Yeah, and when he has another advantage, we don't check raise very often.
Now we gotta double.
He might not have the nut advantage, but I think he might have like a range advantage or.
Actually, when we, when we look at the solution, we can see the.
Yeah, we can have a quick beat.
We're gonna have to check again.
On the board, on the slow. Breakdown. Look at ranges, there we go, yeah, look at how close it's running. It's like, nose to nose, on all.
Yeah.
Who's green and who's blue?
So there is a textures where he has just that better.
Where does he get that gap there? Where, what combos are they? Where it kinda has some separation further up?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah. So what are we looking at? I'm not even sure what I'm looking at.
It, it's like, um, flush, flush draws, it's combo draws.
It's like range versus range, how equities run.
Yeah, but in that separation, go back to the middle where the separation is, it's a lot of combo draws that the button has in that gap.
What are the cards that are showing there? Eight, seven, nine, seven, I don't.
It's the same hand class, Ken. See, see like eight-seven suited versus nine-seven suited. If we look at the other ones, it's like, equities are close within these hands. Nine-six versus nine-eight, for example.
I never really look at this, at those graphs.
It just tells you how equities run along.
Yeah, it's important to start understanding this graph, because that graph determines sizing and strategy.
Yeah. Call again.
Um, nah, yeah, I didn't think so, I was like, man, it's either a folder stuff.
That's too, that's a little too large.
Okay, okay, didn't think we were gonna fold this type of hand, huh? So, ace size, super connected, so we're gonna go super forward, so, big bet.
I'm checking.
It's a big bet, think about, like, you have a top pair, it's this, this type of board, you're gonna bet big, you have a top pair. This is gonna hide under your ace, king and ace queens.
Big bets fifty percent.
Yeah. It's just hiding within your other aces now, now, now.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe we just check.
Pretty bad.
Well, we're not gonna fold for now.
I am, I'm out.
Okay.
You're calling for a chalk? That's a mistake.
Wow, left that pair and he bet small.
He's got straights, two pairs.
Smallest bet he can use?
Yeah, but he can do that with the nuts. He's got two pairs, he's gonna do that with, he's got straights, he's gonna do that with, he's got sets, he's gonna probably do that with.
It's not just my flop strategy that is wrong, it's also post flop.
Uh, I wanna bet big.
Oh, range bet small.
Nah, it's, it's small bets.
The queen eye board, right, at the end of the day?
We have aces and kings he doesn't have, so I wanted to start putting them in the blender right away.
We are not betting too often here. I would guess this one is like somewhere here.
It's not, I think, I think, uh, Trips board is a range bet small.
I'm great, I'm sizing up.
Yeah, so it's never checked.
Well, it, it is checking, but.
How do we construct range?
There's a lot of big betting on Trips boards, actually, Joey, depends on the positions, it depends on a lot, uh, how you got to the flop.
Yeah.
In this scenario, we have aces and kings that he doesn't have, so we could just start putting them in the blender right away.
Yeah, look at the range advantages.
Alright.
So what's gonna happen here is the, the cards that we have that can make the best full houses. With draws are gonna bet small, and the cards with the draws to the lowest full houses are gonna bet big, because they, they, they have a better advantage. From making him fold right away. So you're gonna bet like nine-seven big, and you're gonna bet king-jack small.
Trips boards.
So, what is that? Checkings, like ninety-five?
Yeah, I would just say, I've just simplified it to a range bet.
Yeah, the, the key heuristic is that when you have small cards, you bet big, and when you have big cards, you bet small.
But it really depends on what the trips are, and it really depends on the scenario, sometimes you're gonna have a lot of small bets, sometimes you're gonna have big bets. It really depends on trips.
Peter, do you think it's gonna be the case on other trip boards?
Um, I think it's gonna be the case on high trip boards and low trip boards. Medium trip boards, which is his range better, or gonna be a little different?
Yeah, like, if it's two-two-two, I think we're betting a lot more, uh, combos larger, honestly.
Yeah, it's still, it's still small.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still small bets when you have two big cards though, right? King-jack and king-queen still small bet.
So.
I mean, ace-queen's betting, uh, ace-kings betting big.
Well, well, those are value hats.
Right.
Right, cause they cooler everything else. And when they're beat, they have a ton of equity still.
But we, now, how much of our range bet fifty percent pot when it was queen, queen, queen? We got sixty percent here, I think it's gonna be a little less with the queens and the kings, actually, yeah, drops down.
Very similar.
That dropped down quite a bit.
Does it stand?
Sixty percent less, you went to, you, you shift to a small, more smaller bets is all.
It's even true on an ace-eye board, you bet.
Yeah, you just, you, you just shift to smaller bets, you're betting a ton still, but your bets shift. On the king, ace, 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 king, 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 queen, queen, queen.
Well, cause you don't have over pairs as your advantage anymore.
Right.
Right? You just have better under pairs.
Right.
Okay. So we have small card, gonna be big. Oh, now what? Peter, what do we do next?
We three bet, we see bet, and we fold, or we jump.
Did we not pick up equity here?
Uh, the equity doesn't matter, cause it's a full house.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, so it's, like, you're not looking to make the straight here.
Jack of hearts, are you betting?
Uh, no.
Yeah, straight, straights and flushes aren't gonna do much on this board.
I was gonna say, we gotta have some bets still, because we still have aces and kings. So it's never gonna be a pure check. And we got queens, quite frankly, as well.
Okay.
Three bet bluff, we see bet bluff, he's called us twice, the jig is up.
We can still triple barrel bluff, we haven't tried that yet.
Might, you can fold now.
Just fold.
Should bluff.
It's fine.
So he loves having an ace there, he's blocking our aces, he's blocking what we're representing, alright, so, it's dicey.
Oh, three low cards, range bet.
Uh.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that. Sure. It was just a question of sizing and to size up, we need over cards. Or a spade. Now.
Hold on, yeah, you gotta gutter, you gotta keep blasting. Spade doesn't come in, you're still, you got equity here with the five and the eight, so.
Nothing changed with the deuce, what kind of?
Dude, the two's a brick, so we still have our gutter, we still have our over, we still have all the over pairs. Flush doesn't come in, like, I mean, we gotta keep betting, right?
I guess.
Size up, price size up, it's like seventy-five.
Doesn't add up in my brain. You see this, you think you have equity? You think you're not bluffing on the flop?
Um, I think I gotta get like seventy-five here.
You think you're a value betting here?
I'm bluffing.
You're bluffing with a seven here.
Yeah.
We had that bluff before, we three bet bluffed on the flop, we have ace high, it's time to give up.
You gotta gutter, you gotta gutter.
Yeah, time to give up.
No.
It's not a give-up, you.
Yeah, check.
Well, I can't get into this conversation, cause I saw the answer when he clicked it.
Yeah. Problem is, yeah. Okay, okay, we get better aces to fold, right? They didn't fold the flop. Now they're willing to fold, like ace, ace-jack, for example. Ace-jack, one spade, in his hand, he's gonna call flop to get.
Yeah.
So we get the aces.
He, he's gonna have a lot of overs too.
I forgot the sizing though.
I think, I, I would say seventy-five percent, I didn't say it.
Nah, I think, I think the sizing was a shove, it was a shove.
Jesus Christ.
Gross.
So I mean, I knew, I got my heuristics down, I mean, I know it's, I figured large, I just didn't know all in.
You bluff the six as well? What is going on here? Turn deuce, why is that deuce such a good turn?
Complete brick.
Nothing change?
Yeah. He's gonna have a lot of hands with just overs. That, we're denying equity too, also.
He's got a starfold and flush draws, right?
But if you bet super thin, probably not. Like eight and two forty is not folding.
Nah, but when we go all in, flush draws are folding, right?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe flush draws with two, like, high, like ace, king, spades probably ain't folding, right, like, but.
Alright, let's move on.
So we bet small, was it the two broadways, we bet small, ace-high two, uh, with Broadway, ace-Broadway, was it a small bet?
Now, ace-Broadway's polar.
Large bet, heavy check.
Yeah, so I think this is a good big bet.
I think it's a good check.
It's a nice big bet.
Big bet?
Yeah, both are.
Checking is fine. Oh, now what, we give up?
No, uh, no, yeah, oh, man, geez, yeah.
SPR sucks.
We give up, it's fine.
Oh, oh, all in. So if you're gonna, so you split your range with this, it checked like forty percent of the time, when you bet it, you gotta go with it, when you check it, I guess you can call. You just like, see what develops.
Yeah, we, we still have equity, I mean, the five was a blank.
This is savage. All in now, yeah.
I bet so small, you just, oh, you do all in, okay. Toast.
Let's do it again.
Check this time.
I think I'd rather check, is that, is going?
Cool.
Check raise?
Cool.
Oh. Brick, check? Yeah?
Jam? Oh, we're such fish.
No, you, you gotta check the river.
Look at the EV. EV's so small.
Check, check turn, I'm on a bluff, I'm bluffing all my single spades here, a lot of single spade stuff, right?
I think, but, so three bet, oh, he gives it up.
Shows the jack-eight again.
We got lucky.
Oh, five-six, nice.
We got lucky.
Queen nine, I.
Yeah, it's a larger.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's checking heavy.
Yeah, but your bet size is good.
Why would you check sixty percent here?
I don't know.
Connects too well with his following range.
I would, I would free, I'd freeze now.
All in?
Nah, check. I think the seven's much better for his range. Oh, wow, it is all in.
Wanna go all in.
He could just have ten jockeys, right, this is so sick.
That's also something I'm not doing correctly right now, this big jam on the turn. Need more of that.
Check.
Uh, no, it's a three-bet pot, the two Broadway, we were gonna bet there.
One of our worst aces, one of our worst aces.
Check.
Have some aces that are checking range, right?
Oh.
Everyone's right.
Yeah, but. Now we.
No, go like, go like seventy-five.
Yeah, I think, which is about polar, or which is about a geometric to go seventy-five percent, so you're up for an easy. Yeah, I think, which is about polar, or was it about a geometric to go seventy-five percent? Set you up for an easy river jam.
I bet.
Just get it.
It's not up to us.
Nope. Whoa, nice. Yeah, I wanna do it, and but now I wanna blast.
No, it was seventy, it was seventy-five percent, Louis.
Yeah, why? What's going on?
Yeah, this is a really polar board.
Yeah, it's just betting all the aces.
Okay, so it's not pale blue here. I see.
Whale blue.
Hey, so it's like mostly like. Uh, okay. All in?
I guess.
Yeah. What the?
Okay.
We have half. The half pot jam. See, I'll never find this in game because that doesn't make sense to me at all.
If anyone knows what's going on, please let us know.
Look at the strategy, see what's.
Now I can't even fold a ten probably.
River is easy, we just jam the turn, why small? Smaller check.
Yeah, all our races are betting small. They just wanna keep them in. After, after you blast. He's, his hat, you fold up too much of his trash.
You know what? Twenty-five is geometric with this stack.
Look at the bluffs we get to have with that small bet though. They're queens. Queen threes betting full, turn a pair of threes. You're betting it. Queen four, queen five, queen six, gutter and a pair, just gutters. Really likes to gutter in the pair though. Queen three, it loves.
So a small part of the tree, let's not spend too much time. Okay, king low, low, range bet small.
Sure.
Very small. Small again or big?
Small.
Small.
Yeah, yeah.
Check.
Check or small? Can we go all in? Probably not.
Just. I would go all in.
Oh my God, that's five.
Yeah, five.
One big blind.
Ten percent.
You have to leave him room to bluff the spades and the hearts.
Look at Peter, the wizard. Or under pairs. He had spades and hearts though.
Yeah.
Jack low, low. What did we say about Jack low, low? Polar. I checked. We have over cards, we can bet big.
I like a check here though.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Actually, checker fi- five point five is about even.
Cool.
Easy call.
Uh, just a quick question, because on Jack low, low boards. We were supposed to. Be four.
So I wanted to check because I had a spade. Ace's spade might even check more than the queen of spade.
This one is not too poor. It's checking or?
It's still check, it's still checking forty-four percent.
But it only goes for small sides. Now, my guess was that if you have enough suit hand with a single spade in your hand, then a bad small. And if you don't have the spade. You're gonna bet bigger. That. That the thing. So, with or without? You bet big more without the spade, at least on ace king. On ace queen. On ace ten, you don't. And on ace seven, you bet more. It depends on the quality of your aces. If you have a bad.
Yeah.
Having a spade is good. If you have a good ace high, having a spade drives your frequency.
Well.
Towards the small sides.
Ace six is middle pair too, so that's.
Oh, yeah, okay. So this is a bet small spot, okay? And now. We raise or we call?
I would call one, I guess.
Okay, raising is also a good option. Ooh, develop the spade, we check call, so we're gonna check again? Is that what we're doing?
Gonna check.
Calling?
We, we could call or rip.
I'm out.
I'm. I'm not out. With two overs and a flush draw.
We have the dirt, we had direct equity?
Yeah, we have.
Odd, odd, so I mean, okay.
Ready be here. We won, there we go. Happy day.
Okay, just got a board. I think it's a bed big. But is this hand a bit?
Is it, aren't H Broadway's, uh, mostly checker bet big, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, bet big.
I like pretty well here, right?
Seventy-five percent.
Is their second best unpaired hand? I think it's gonna wanna check a lot.
Yeah.
I disagree.
Could, could GTO Wizard, I don't know if all. GTO calculators? Or solvers? Do they say, but GTO Wizard starts its bluffing from the bottom up.
So queen ten's gonna bet big more often than king ten, right?
Exactly.
I still think this wants to go seventy-five percent.
I think it's gonna be in there. I think it's gonna be the low frequency decision though. Yeah.
I'll say a check.
Yeah, if you look at our range, queen, queen highs are gonna do more bluffing than, um, king high.
That makes sense.
Yeah, if you go to strategy. Yeah, queen ten is pure and king ten is check.
Oh, they're both, what I see, they're both betting, right? But queen ten's betting more.
Queen ten's betting more. And then the hands below the. Jack. Are betting larger and more often. Cause it, it's constructing its bluffs from the bottom portion of the range working up.
Okay. Then big with these low queens. With the backdoor flush, right? Okay.
All of them.
Four, queen four's a pair, queen three's got a wheel, queen three's, five's got a wheel.
Oh yeah, the, the queen with a three or a five have the back door both ways for the straight.
I don't know what queen six is up to, to be honest, I'd never find that.
Well, yeah, queen six is easier than king ten, because it's got much less equity.
No, but I mean, I could, I can see the queen three, four and five, but the queen six to me is just like, I would never think of it.
Alright, did it go check, check?
Uh, yes.
No, no, that was too big.
We check. Yeah.
I, I like sixteen, because it sets up stacks.
There's no way I went ever check it.
So with a spade, maybe we check more without a spade, we probably bet pure.
Oh, now. I'm not folding, but it's just like, how do you wanna get the money?
All you can eat. Oh my God, that's the same. I got a spade in my hand, I'm jamming that all day long.
How can you find all those very small bet when you cannot live?
When you have the nuts, when you have pocket aces and you wanna use that small bet here, you could use it here with your straight as well.
Yeah, cause the flush hit, so the straight's not the nuts anymore, so you gotta size down.
What's our paired board size?
Mixing.
Um, fifty percent. We're out of position. Oh, go small.
Yeah, it's a king high board, he doesn't have a lot of fives in range. It's just a range bet.
Oh my goodness.
Take, king low, low, we pick up equity.
I'm betting.
How much?
Half pot.
That seems good.
No.
Check.
With disrespect, that double barrel, three point three big lines into thirty big lines.
That's what we would do probably if we had a king.
All in?
Sure, why not?
SPR is one, we have top ten.
Yeah, aces and buys with the king.
I was gonna say check too, he's, he's got fives in range, not many, but he's got ace five, six, five.
Need to find more checks here.
He might even have seven, five. I mean, you can win by checking, so I gotta bet something here.
Now, you, you can win by checking.
I'm betting flop giving up.
King, queen.
Uh, it's no spin. That's gonna want a polar response, right? Like a two Broadway board?
Yeah.
Gives up right away.
Now, I don't think it's.
Louis bet with this pay.
I don't think to give up right away, it depends on the sizing of the bet.
No, but I mean, it doesn't try to, I mean, on the flop, it's checking, it was a pure check.
Pure check, even with it's.
Oh, look how many kings we have in range, that's why.
But that should allow us to bet some of these combos. So the sixes wanna bet. Our worst pair bets some.
Yeah, and then our bottom trash.
Check. Check.
We don't block anything.
Check.
I don't, I don't think we're winning at showdown. Pulled.
With the eight as paid, do you call?
No, shows pocket five's button. King three. Uh, yeah, I show, I'm not good doing anything with this hand. I took my shot pre-flop and lost.
So in the overall strategy, we check a lot on this scenario, and it's not even the check raise, right?
Well, this might be one of the outliers, uh, monotone board. I would bet two point two.
So on a monotone board with. Yeah, with locked up equity, the aces wants to check here sometimes. Right? It just wants to play a small pot.
I am never finding a bet with this hand.
Now, on monotone boards, we bet often and small.
Yeah, but some of the aces are starting to find checks as well.
If, if one was an option, if it gave us a one big blunt option, I think that's the best. Bet.
I surrender.
Yeah, I think we're done now.
Get out.
Uh, I was about to say this guy has dust, he has like queen jack, but no, he does not have dust.
Fifty percent of check, we don't have an over, so I'm leaning towards.
Well, remember, it builds its range from the bottom up.
Yeah, I still like to have a king here, at least, but yeah, we gotta bet some, right? He's gonna probably go fifty, fifty.
And we do have backdoor straight and. Flush equity.
Yeah.
Hmm, queen.
So it's seventy-five percent or check, I think, right?
I tell eleven point five.
Oh, it was fifty.
So why don't you bet big here again, Joe?
Huh?
Why do you bet?
Because this is a board where we check a lot, but this is one of the hands who would wanna bluff, so. It's gonna be larger bet or check.
Why this end you wanna bluff?
Because it's. It's coming. GTO Wizard constructs its bluffs from the bottom up, and this is a weak, one of our weaker hands. It, if this was like king ten, it might be checking. Or it's gonna check more often with king ten than ten seven.
So no, the tens wanna match, so king ten does wanna bet about as frequently, it matches the tens up, so your tens are gonna.
Yeah.
So.
Big, 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 big.
So like.
And lower.
Yeah, I don't get the heuristic exactly here.
Cause we don't have the jack ten. Don't have suited tenzer. But again, Joe. It's a good big bet, but I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, it's just at the bottom of our range that has equity that connects with the straight and the flush.
Just the dang or the tens of dangler, right? With backdoors?
Yeah, we got both backdoors and it's, it's one of our lower. Backdoor hands.
Ten is like the key card to bluff with. Or like, yeah, no, it seems to be a ten. Because the rest is like a queen or a king. Okay, so the king as well, I guess.
Yeah, I would think.
Upper dangler, lower dangler.
Okay, oh yeah, king and ten.
I thought, I thought a hand like king ten would be checking more. Than it is, but it looks like it's about even with ten, seven suited.
Upper bottom dangler, okay, that's good.
The double dangler.
But the sizing was easy because this is a board where we, we're not gonna bet small. We're either gonna bet large or check.
On this turn.
That card's supposed to be better for us.
That's small, maybe. Or check.
We, we didn't turn equity, we could also give up here, but.
We did turn, we got, we got equity, we picked up a gutter. We have aces or we have the best aces of our range, and you know it's an have. He doesn't have ace, king, ace, queen much. Doesn't have ace, king at all, he doesn't have, he, ace, queen, he's got like the suited.
And. And also, some of his offsuit aces are in a four bet bluff range.
They four bet jammed some of the offsuit ace, oh yeah, it's offsuit aces, right? Yeah, so like.
No, I think we have to go in here.
I think it's.
Not, not with this end, I don't.
I, I, I like barreling, but I'm completely, I have no clue on sizing here.
If we are to bet here, I think all in is the only side.
Ten percent or check, I'd say.
Yeah. I think you're getting bad here. Yeah.
Yeah, we can bet some, but prefers to check.
Like when he stops, this is a clear give up, so.
Nah. Checks the ace.
What do we do on the turn?
Check, check.
Yeah.
Oh.
It, it's mostly just completely giving up.
Yeah.
Uh, gotta go for it sometimes.
Oh, nah, I'm okay with going for it.
I need it.
King low, low, small, but size up with this hand. No, just small.
Size up if you had one spade, maybe.
Hey.
I give Margie fifty percent. I'm going fifty percent.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
Fish on the line.
Rip it. I'm gonna bet kinda big here.
The check or bet? Small.
Uh, ten low, low, I think was a, I think it's a bigger bet.
It's like here.
Now, Jackson tents are polar.
Okay, maybe we bet big. That's a check.
Yeah, ace, it's the top of our unpaired hands.
Check again, nothing changed.
Uh, we value bet.
We could.
Gotta call, right? Check showdown. Old.
Old. Hmm.
That tells me when they get there on a river like that.
The GTO wizard gets there on a river often.
So.
All in?
Nah, I mean, king, queen.
Nah, we we had something like a ten, nine, seven board before, or ten, nine, eight.
He could just have a straight now, too, I mean, I gotta bet smaller check, I think.
I like checking.
Check, yeah. King, see what king, king, queen might do it LP, but I don't think ace, queen never does.
I thought ace, king and ace, queen would do it.
Nah, I think you need king.
Nah.
Ace, jacks.
Ace, jack. Oh, the direct, yeah, cuz that's got to gutter.
Yeah. Yeah.
King, jack, ace, jack, that makes sense.
Yeah, all the jacks wanna go.
Sliver's a king, queen, not much.
Okay.
Yeah, matches your jacks are jamming, queens are jamming. Honestly, I think we can fold.
That is queen.
Yeah, well, it folds a lot, right?
Yeah, sure does.
Now we fold.
Yeah.
Check.
Ace low, let's get a range, you bet, right?
If I had jack of spades, I'd bet. I'm gonna check this one.
There are some checks, I.
Oh.
Oh, small bet.
It's this part.
Tiny, tiny, tiny.
Just a range bet.
Yeah.
Give all the best aces, he doesn't.
Oh, he's got his cheek graph up.
But it's here, y'all can see, right?
We bet flop.
Yeah, we did. So I think I think we have to slow down now.
Yeah.
This is a great.
Oh, yeah, uh, I was just about to say that, although the king is really a good card to barrel.
If it came like a king I board then and next turn, I think it would be a lot better than our next sideboard and king.
I think it's good.
If we had air, I would bet, but.
Alright.
Small bet, I think we can call it.
We don't block too many bluffs, the jack block, block, so I think it's gonna be mixing folds and calls here.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree.
Only cuz we have a jack, jack.
I think with the small bet, I think you have to call.
I'm surprised.
You don't have a spade, the jack's kinda bad, but not having the spade, uh, yeah. I would have been mixing their folds of balls, just check.
Yeah, it goes check, check, you wouldn't if he bets default?
Yeah.
I mean, we're still littered with aces and kings here in our range, right? Like, he can't just be blasting here.
Yeah.
I mean, I might bet real tiny again, I would, like, I checked this, I don't really know what to do with this hand here, so it might be a tiny bet though.
I. I think it, the upper aces are checking, and it's probably mixing as it gets lower.
I agree with Joey, I think we size up with the worst ones.
Yeah, half pot.
Well, this is still in the check.
Do we need a spade to bet?
Probably.
I would say so.
Oh, this this queen ten, it has it has big bets only, so it's more polar.
Need the ace or spade or.
Yeah.
Same with the kings, yeah. We can bluff with a spade. But all the spades is a check, hey, I'm never checking that often in game. Been playing this spot a little bit wrong. But I've been getting away with murder as well.
I might turn it, if I had the ace of spades, I might bluff here, but I just think we check again. Like, I don't really want, there's nothing about this hand that makes people wanna bluff, honestly, even with the ace of hearts, that's what I meant to say.
Check.
Just fold.
Fold.
Oh, so sick.
We we don't have to fight for every pot.
So you can go kinda large here?
No, range bet, I would go two point two.
He's got all the overpairs that can't fold, he's got backdoor draws, like, I think he can go at least fifty percent, if not bigger.
I would go either two or five because it's a fair board, we range.
Yeah.
We're out of position, though, we get to size up a lot.
Okay, yeah, it works.
There was one earlier where we didn't, but it's often, it's a pretty often heuristic out of position on paired boards.
Okay.
Are queens need less protection, like, we're gonna have bigger bets with smaller pairs?
Go half pot again, we have a, we block spade, so. And he's not gonna have many eights, right? Just stuff it. Got an eight this time, don't he?
Of course. We have to get cooler than these hands, or we're we're not playing.
A big. This one's, this is one that's gonna go bet half pot, I think it's gonna go, no, I think this goes small, size up, jam.
It's draining my mindset at the same time, Joe.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I said it's draining my mindset at the same time.
I think this goes very small, flop, polarize, turn, jam, river, almost on any run out.
I think this checks, this is one of the hands that wants to check here.
Alright. Next thing. King turn, do we bet it or we give up?
What, did we, we bet on the flop?
Nope, check on the flop.
We went with the bet on the flop.
Nah, he went with the bet. It should have been a check, but he went with the bet.
Then.
I think we check now.
That's small.
Small.
I wanna go small.
Not small.
It was big.
All in even.
Even online. Yeah, I thought this was a hand that was gonna end up, I thought it was gonna go small, big, turn on almost any run out, honestly, and.
Not that it matters very much, but is that a good river or bad river?
He, well, he's slow paying, playing pocket jacks, so.
We don't love it.
Think it's a scam river, Joey?
Yeah.
He has a nine or a pocket jacks?
Gonna show you ace, queen.
He has.
It's a scam every time.
Happy days. Oh, we have a spade here, I know what to do.
And an upper dagler.
Oh, I know what to do, but I don't know the right side, it seems. Queen.
That's hard, those two sizes are just kinda close, you know?
Well, remember, unlike the two Broadway boards, it wants to use the big polar sizing a lot. And you do that.
Gonna fold.
Yeah, good night, Irene.
Oh.
Fifty percent.
Ten, ten, two.
Yeah, what do you do with pocket kings there? You wanna arrange backs up our board, but with pocket king, you wanna size up. So it's fifty percent.
Oh, check, pure check.
Or not, or not.
We're not betting all paired boards. Pairs of tens seem particularly bad.
Seems like eight, seven is not bucket kings.
If you look at our range construction, like, we flat all those suited tens. So we just don't have them here.
Wow.
It was just our combo here, we called it outlier.
Suited tens.
What's wrong with our suits? Clubs, it doesn't like the king of clubs for some reason, with the heart and the diamond.
It doesn't block.
Well, it it blocks some of this folding range.
But also the size here. Okay. So check on this.
Yeah, probably paired jacks and paired tens are probably the worst paired boards for us.
So we're calling all ace highs here, right? When we're gonna call our best king highs, I imagine, so I'm out. This is definitely not one. This isn't one of my best kings, I'm giving it up. King, queen, I call, king, jack.
Yeah, we have, we have better hands to go with.
Oh, my God.
Sick, sick.
Like.
King low, low, we range that small, we would wanna have a spade in our hand ideally, but is this good enough?
I.
Do we really bet with a spade only? King low, low, what does it look like? King low, low is like range bet, right?
Like, I would think before. Yeah.
King low, low, what does it look like? Yeah, it's a lot of small bets, okay. Range is small. But again, I think it's still the same thing, wanna have a spade in our hand to bet here.
Yeah, and even like worse hands, we have ace highs, not terrible.
Look at this.
I have a spade.
Versus without a spade.
Right.
But it's really with the spade. Or even on. Yeah.
So your ace, as you can make a note, your ace high needs, uh, you know, backdoor flush equity to see bet your chunky aces. On these king high boards.
Yeah. Well, it's it's on flush drawboards in general, right?
Sure.
Yeah, we we, this is at least the second time we saw that.
So in general, on flush drawboards, you wanna have a part of the flush to see that.
Yeah, like, and I don't even think the three's, like, the three spades probably isn't bad. If it was like ace, club, three of spades, you're still probably checking.
No. We are betting, Ken.
Okay. Any spade.
A spade is good enough.
I didn't think the three spade would be relevant.
Neither, but it's a spade, spade is a spade.
Size up.
Check.
Uh, we have a hand that's good now, but vulnerable, I think we size up.
It's queen nine plus, so we're we're supposed to go polar. So seventy-six percent?
I would say so.
Uh, we've been checking, we've been checking a lot of top pairs.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't be, it might go all in, but it didn't. You clicked me out of that flub. Just jam it now.
Oh, keep the fish on the line, half pot.
Away. Stick it in. Oof.
Fish on the line.
Look at this, I'd bet size, now what's the SPR when he calls there? Twelve, it'll be twelve and then like a hundred.
No, it's perfect, I like that. Bucket six, heavy check. Nine.
Hold on, so, hold on, hold on, what worse, what's our worst pair we three bet, this might be it, so we could. We might be able to barrel this, we have backdoor straight equity. I feel like it wants to barrel.
It's a low board, so we mostly bet. Right? And then nine.
Yeah.
It's about here, so it's arranged that small. Even sizes up sometimes.
Yeah, you wanna try, squeak out a little extra fold equity probably with this exact hand.
This is a good turn, I think.
Yeah, I think we can barrel now.
I don't know about that.
For value, yeah.
It reduces the nine X in his range and i- it improves the value of our hand.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness, he has it. Oh, happy days, we finally wanna stack.
Wait, does he even raise nine, X his nine X there? Like, probably not, right?
Oh, he probably makes, he probably is mixing, Ken. Oh, we're not going pure called just to get triggered.
We're not gonna see the queen of diamonds on the river. It won't show us, but that's what we get.
Pair of king board, we don't have a spade.
I think we bet small. Oh.
It's connected, though, it's a connected board.
It's a fair board, we're out of position.
Couple Broadway paired boards, we're out of position, we don't have the spade, yeah, I think that's why it sizes up there. I think small.
Fifty per, oh, check.
Size down when everything comes in on that.
Yeah.
But you click way too fast, so you don't get to go big again. Honestly, just check call here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Doesn't even wanna be put to the test, just wants to stuff it.
Pretty weird hand, oh, surprise, or me.
I thought we would want to let him have bluffs. This could bet. Kinda gutter. No spade.
It's low, low, we range that.
Fifty percent, I'd say. Maybe bigger. Percent small. Give up.
Give up.
It's a, it's a jack, it's a good.
Ever.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I was like, yeah. Didn't feel like we picked up big, but our range is amazed by this card, no?
Yeah, but I, no spade in my hand, this feels gross.
But I thought Jackson tents were better for their button.
They they are, if it's the high card. But we, if we look at the quality of tens we have in our range, our tens are better than his. Our jacks are better than his, so that's why we check a lot and we bet big when we bet. So he has more of them, but we have, he has a range advantage here, but we have the nut advantage, so it's really a tough scenario. Cause when he, we're so polar in this, in this scenario with our three bet. If we don't even have the nut advantage, I think. Or at least on on many textures, we don't scare.
Check call on this one.
Sounds like two broadways that were were very, very screen. So that's what I pick up from this, two broadways on the board, we're checking or betting bigs. My bet, if my hand can, if I don't have over cards, or if my hand doesn't connect well. I'm checking, and if I have over cards, or if I I'm well connected, I bet big when there's two broadways. It's just one Broadway, I can get range that small and get away with something close. So it's ten, I or jack ten, I need to be cautious. And then everything low, you range that, so sums it up pretty well.
Yeah.
I think this is bet smaller check.
I'm checking.
It's a rain, it's a low, low board, so we're just.
It's a range bet, I think.
And then our hand, if we look at the quality of our hand, pocket king might wanna size up a little bit here, but I don't think so, so just a that small. And bucket king is also gonna bet small, but if we add like ace ten. Or like a jack ten. Bucket jacks and bucket ten wanna size up, so I would venture to say.
Yeah, I think. I think nines, too.
Well, jack ten, king ten. And wanna play like bucket tens. It's wanna play like pocket tens. But since pocket king is betting small, because it's so strong on this texture, ace king is playing small. Now, I guess we give up? We don't give up.
Unbelievable.
We're value betting, expecting to get called by worst ace.
Is it, is it because we, do we borrow because we blocked the backdoor spades?
In my opinion, oh, maybe as well, that's, that might be a thing, but I think it's just ace, king, value betting. Whenever ace king is betting turns small, I, just trying to squeak in value, yeah.
I can't see ace king value betting on a four liner.
It's just trying to squeeze to get value from worse a size, to, for two streets, no matter the suit.
Yeah, you're also gonna generate a lot of folds here. Right?
Yeah, I try to take ace king is more of a.
But like.
The whole range.
It's, it's, it's kinda merged.
Almost everything that folds, we beat, though, which is kinda crazy, but yeah.
Value bet then.
Stuffed the turkey with that king.
I think we, we blast it off.
He's got a seven liner.
Hey.
Oh my god, that feels so bad, that's when I wanna crawl in a hole, like, you get away from.
Yeah.
Play most fast.
It's fine, one spade in our hand, we bet, we bet big, fifty percent, no spade, we check. I have a ace of hearts now, we can go pop.
Check.
Oh, why, why do you wanna?
Because a backdoor flush comes in, uh, I don't think he checks any king X.
You might bluff worse than aces, but I don't think we're bluffing a size.
I, I think.
A chop, maybe?
Ace highs, like a marginal made hand here.
It is.
You're gonna bluff your worst pairs here, like, you're gonna bluff your pocket fives, pocket sixes. Are you, your worst pairs, you raise, your bottom two pairs are gonna bluff probably, and the rest eight.
Maybe too much showdown value, right?
Yeah, that's exactly what I just said, it's marginal made and.
Yeah, too much showdown.
Look at the turn range, see if we bluff our under pairs, like, we have to be, right? Some of them.
Yeah.
Both of them probably some frequency, some small frequency between them all.
Well, I think the pair.
Sixes, sevens, eights, yeah, and then nines a tiny, tiny bit.
And we tend towards the ones with spades and hearts.
It.
So, I mean, you do bet some ace highs, just slivers. It's kinda hard to implement, right? You roll the dice, if you roll like a five, you.
I don't have background here.
No, it's just like, you gotta roll super low or something. So bet big.
I, now I was gonna say fifty percent.
That's jack nine, like jack ten, like, it's like, uh, no?
Check.
No way. No way.
Check.
Nits.
The nine's a better card for him.
What if it's an ace on the river? What if it's a diamond? What if it's a ten?
So, we could check call with this.
I bet, or check.
I bet. Call. Just was never gonna win that hand, ever.
The wizard, the wizard is trolling us today.
Large.
Bit, ooh.
Hey, what's the check here? We went too fast, how's this not a bet?
So jack ten board, we're very polar, we're supposed to use big size, jack ten around here.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, it's like, I think, I thought this hand would wanna bet.
So it's only our overcards are betting big, our queen, queen, ace queen, ace jack.
Exactly.
Yep.
I think our hand has a lot of equity both ways, that it's it's got backdoor, or is it a gut shot?
So just your Broadway's last year.
It's a gut shot with, um, a flush draw.
Alright. Oh shit.
And, and it's a backdoor to the five, too. Call.
Such a difficult spot.
Raise. We never check raise, we haven't check raised once.
It's a sm. Well, it's a better board, we have a range and nut disadvantage.
What I wanna know LP's in the report, is there ever a check raise on, on the flop? Or is that completely eliminated from our game? Cause we haven't seen one.
Well, not on a jack ten board.
I just wanna know, it, you heard through the whole report, do we have check raises? Cause I could just, if we do, I could just eliminate it from my mind right now, and never fuck up.
Yeah, we have some.
We do have raises.
Ten percent, sixteen percent.
But if, if we do the, what is it, the range breakdown and look at the range graph, I'm pretty.
We see here by high cards, uh, we can put it by flops.
Wait, this doesn't look right.
It's a, the green is a call, so it's check call on the flop. And the, the, this part here is the check raise part.
What, what, what board do we check raise the most? Uh, here we go.
King, king, low.
Paired boards. Look at the up, what about the ace, ace? Boards. Yes, some of them.
Some of them.
That's hard to really make a heuristic out of, cause it's just.
Well, it seems to be the rainbow ones.
Um.
And not a Broadway.
Well, not ace, ace, four rainbow. Ace, ace, four, flush draw, two tone is more than, uh. Alright, so two tones are.
But, sorry, but. King pair boards. And then let's look at a queen pair, it's all pair boards, it seems.
I look at the jack ten boards.
So pair boards is where we're gonna find most of our check raises, somewhere to defending big blind.
Okay.
Trip twos.
But, Loi, I wanna look at that line graph for the range and nut equities. I just wanna verify my thoughts that.
Six is check raised a ton, right?
Yeah, we have a range, a big range disadvantage, but we're even in no, no nut advantage and a range disadvantage on this board.
Yeah. You have the nut and range advantage, but it's facing is a art check and it's bet, right?
So, yeah.
What are the yellow dots?
Um, uh, somebody told me what they mean before and I forget, I'm sorry.
I am not familiar with them.
Think Jonathan might, oh, how'd you do that? I think Jonathan may have explained it in one of his videos, but.
What, yeah.
Yeah, what the yellow dots mean, but I forget what he said.
Oh, I don't remember that, no. I mean, I'm sure the, the answer's in here.
Yeah, we have a, a big range advantage in the middle of the chart, or range disadvantage.
Alright. So this is a spot where. Are you gonna check though?
Jack ten with a flush draw, very polar spot.
So we check called, so we're checking.
Yeah, check. Well, uh, half pot.
I'm giving up.
Now, I feel like we have to blow this.
Turn one, check, check, you gotta blow.
I blow small.
Wow, we didn't get coolerd. I expect you have pocket fives there.
We could bet.
Don't hit that all in.
Backdoor, backdoor flush wants to realize equity, backdoor flush might check here.
Direct under danglers, I think we bet small and ten low, low.
I think it ma, no, it.
With the.
I think it mixes.
Spades I can, but I think the hearts are gonna wanna check.
Could be right, Peter, might just try, might just draw from front door flush draws, I'm not positive, I feel like I wanna bet this one now. Just because of the dangling effect, too.
Yeah.
You have like, you can, you can go eight high straight, ten high straight. Line high, backdoor flush, you have no. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a bet small.
Yeah, let's click it and see.
Twenty-five percent.
Now I see.
It's ten low, low.
Yeah.
I don't see any merit in betting this combo.
Uh, it does, thirty percent, forty, forty percent of the time, it does bet.
I think it was, if it was jack nine, it might be bet.
Alright.
I think unders, under danglers are more in the check.
Alright, I'll be bluffing the bottom up.
If you're watching from YouTube, make sure to like and subscribe, uh, you can, you guys can join our study group, by the way, uh, just get together and let's study. Thanks a lot for watching, guys.